The last, Marty, what did you do for the last 45 minutes? That's what I did at the office.
Hey, our call this meeting, order, please.
United States of America, through a republic which sustains one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our agenda, it is a prayer work session. Everybody should have here, comprehensive committee, puzzle discussion, have consent about the lives. Historical artifacts discussion required, drainage task force discussion required, environmental dashboard, sets, issues or changes to the agenda.
I'd like to add an update for Bob on the yacht club, thing link, and Taylor Bank. And just so that everybody does remember that we're all, this is a working session. We know motions are voting here, however, everybody is included and allowed to say something as you're recognized first board is and then if they don't say.
With regard to John, Bob is not, but this was only get that on the agenda.
Okay, so you want this for regular meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Being a gentleman, you're being a gentleman.
Okay.
Okay, since Mr. Derek is not here, let's go on to Marty, historical artifacts discussion.
I sent it out to anybody, it's, we'll start with the bottle bug. If you're familiar with, most I think everybody on the board familiar with. It hung over the top of the bar and sent for the whole yacht club. Before that, in Holland, it was called Island Peach. It's a model boat given to Ocean Pines by Boise Cascade. It fell off its mountains, actually made its own way. But this kid that works over at Marina where I, finds point where Mark Oldham, anybody that knows him, he goes by, Wyatt Park, he got me, we picked it up, we took it over to his shop, and he has restored it. I don't know if anybody's seen it. I meant to get a picture for everybody, but I mean, it's, I have a picture in my phone if anybody wants to see it. It's restored and it's better than it was. The motion that I'm going to make at the meeting will be that we mount this ship and I'll pass that around. That we will mount this in a prominent place or a suitable place, somewhere in the yacht and I guess we'd have to make an investment of case for something to protect. I'd like to see a plaque, but I'd insist as part of my motion actually, that there's some history and market and credit. This guy's donating his time. I think we need to pay him for materials, Sharon and I both told him that we would help materials. He's got $300 in his pocket and he's a carpenter, this time of year, $300.
It's gorgeous.
It's unbelievable what he's done. There's also the sign that Sharon's rescued.
It's in my garage, anytime you want to get it, spark with me. That's a luck issue, okay.
And then there's also the documents that these croppers, that Jenners have donated. I haven't seen them. You know, there's old plaques, Joe Moore's office, he'll spend an hour just staring at the frame. Some of these might be framed, and I think it should be museum quality frame, preserved. We're going to be looking to cover walls with pictures of the new yacht club. We have this stuff in a box in order to be able to see it, get it framed. That's basically what I'm hoping to be, I believe that covers what I sent around.
Jack or anybody in the table?
For what?
Any comments on his motion?
Oh, no, I think it's a good idea.
Marty and I have both met, Mark, and I apologize, lost Mark's vote, had a vote lost there. But anyway, I do want to talk to him about, see it, the boat, he called, come see it. So I'm very much in favor of supporting this motion. There are other artifacts that other organizations have. For example, I have the first flag that flew over the Veterans' Royal. That needs to be framed in a case. So there's things like this that I think there may be other organizations that have received special awards that are governors award Veterans' Royal. So maybe there's someplace, Bob, in the design of the yacht club that we could display this special recognitions and awards.
You mentioned an original poster, I have one, it's rough stuff.
Right, I was given one and I thought we should get that framed too, original poster that went out, so.
This is similar on their auction.
Right, exactly, using an auctioning one. And there may be other things other people have to be, that are really some significance of historical. Moving right along in the conversation here.
Maybe we can go through John, John Thomas' garage.
Garage, I talked to John, I says, John, please clean out some, stop self seeing. Anybody else, Tom? Anybody in the?
The only thing I would add to that is.
Yeah, and everybody is interested. That's what we'll put you in. Time capsule, oh yeah, 99 years.
I'll come back.
Do we want that?
Not if I get there first.
Do you want that to be part of his motion?
Doesn't have to be, no, I just, yeah, I think you can have motion for these kinds of facile, I think that we have a time capsule and that can be worked.
Well, I don't think it would hurt to stick it in there and that way everything.
Marty, would you be willing to mod by your motion to include a time capsule?
I mean, then everything would be all together.
Somebody said, somebody else was spurious, period of that, I had a problem.
Okay, anybody else, any comments? I think you have my badge, Tom. Okay, all right, Drainage Force, Marty, on to you again, Drainage Task Force discussion.
This is where I get even with it, Bill. I put this on the agenda and was clearly stepping on some heels because I heard from Jack, I heard from, and I know Bill was very interested in this issue. In the past, we've done task force, golf was only semi-successful, the community center over there was very successful. We have talent in Ocean Pines that have been raising their hand to help on this drainage problem since I served on the board the last time. We've gotten to a place in time where we, we, I just think that all this stuff on the table, let the people that are there in the hip boots during problems. I have five or six meetings, short term, I mean, I'd like to see it over by June, but I'm going to turn it over and let Jack and Bill co-edit it up.
Well, Phil and I chatted about it and that's one of the topics that he ran on as, you know, as running, so we thought it made sense if the two of us like co-chair this committee. Bob and I have talked at it at length and the original concept that I had in mind was Bob and I, and then I thought it would be a good idea that Bill would come on board. Now, Bill was informing me that Bob, you would like to attend the meetings, but you don't necessarily want to chair anything, is that what I'm understanding?
No, I didn't, I didn't say that, I'm saying that, we talked last week when I talked about Marty's motion, that you were okay with us taking it on as a task force or something to get things moving, to get that away, get that out of your office.
Whatever the board wants to do on that one. I can tell you where the issues are, I mean, but.
But, but, I mean, you would, you would, you would serve on that committee, right? I mean, you would be on that committee with us.
If it's a support committee, board has, I'll turn over anything I can, I'm not, when it goes to board committee, it changes the rules. You and I have talked about it.
Right.
Sitting in, in meeting after meeting to discuss the issue when we already know where some of the solutions are, we're going to just keep doing the same thing. We've done this many, many times, so whatever you guys want to do, I mean, you ask me to be in a meeting, I'll be at a meeting. I don't want to sit at six months worth of meetings to get to the same spot where we are today, which is what we tend to do. It's not, depending on where you are, we have taken some significant steps to make improvements to challenges where at sea level, I mean, there's a host of, we don't need to go in here.
Right, 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 right.
There are some solutions that, but they're big steps we have to take or we can continue to study.
Well, it's not really a study. It is and it isn't, I guess basically that, we see this as a proactive committee making a series of short-term recommendations, not long-term planning. Now, they may come to a conclusion that there really should be a long-term plan put in place and that may involve, you know, your RFPs that you've put in place, but that's, that's coming from the folks now. Now, it's coming from the community indicating that that would be a good solution and a good idea to go down that road. In the interim, they're looking at maybe section two, section three, other spots that I may not be familiar with, I don't know. Also, people have contacted me, people like Jim Bunning, he said he'd be willing to serve and he would bring in some resources from the county to serve. There are individuals within the community that have called me and indicated to me that they would like to be on that committee. They're engineer types, they understand hydraulics, they understand water flow and things of that nature. Bill, do you want to add that?
Can I? So, kind of in this place again, so Bob?
What place is that? What do you mean we're in a place?
Wait a minute, give me a second to say. So, Bob is, is working on the drainage problems as the general managers before him have, so there's a, there's, I'm going to guess probably from the get-go, there's been a continual drainage problem for a long time, because, because of being a sea level. So, you have the general manager who's already done a tremendous amount of work, but you have a group of members who have all this expertise. My thinking, I would bring that group of people together that you want to have on this, I guess, committee or task force and have Bob maybe update them or let them know what is going on at this point.
That was the original concept, that was the original concept, but it is now being brought to the board level. This is what, what Bob Thompson and I talked about and now it's being brought to the board level in a formal formation of a task force.
So this is what I hear, because I'm not involved in drainage at all.
Right.
This is what, this is what I hear just from what's been presented in the last 10 minutes. I hear the board and membership wanting to create a committee, task force, to look into the drainage issues.
It's really, look into is, look into is an improper word, resolve is a better word.
Okay, but you have a general manager who's already working to resolve those.
Resolve is a better word, not look into, it's not a study.
Okay, Jack, hold on a second.
It's not a study.
Okay, but you gotta let me finish. You have at board level now, a group of, some board members and a group of members, who have much expertise in drainage, who are going to look into the drainage issues of Ocean Pines and hopefully resolve them, but you have a general manager, whether it be Bob or anybody else, who already has been working on the drainage problems in Ocean Pines to a certain point, so I, I, I don't understand, to me, it sounds like one's going to fight against the other, not fight, but one's going to be doing stuff, Bob's already doing it, or not, I don't, I see a little bit of a discord.
I didn't see it, it's right, I sort of have my work gathered.
Well, no, and I didn't mean fighting, I didn't, I did not mean people fighting, I meant, work is being done here, work is going to be done here. Aren't they gonna meet?
Yes, yes, they will meet.
In the next few months, I'm expecting, I don't know, the way we presented a contract or a suggested contract for engineering, I mean, there's an RFP we were given, RPF, whatever, okay, mapping and stormwater drainage study. When I'm, the purpose of my motion, and I think is where they were jumping on, is what we're talking about is free, free. I talk to people like Madison Commissioner, who also brings in Mr. Shaw, they think it can be resolved what we have now.
Okay, and I am totally, I'm not against that whatsoever, so don't, don't get me wrong, but I.
If you're not against it, what's your point?
My point is, we have a general manager who's already, who's already working those issues, so are, is it gonna connect?
So why don't we, why don't we just forget about input from outside of the administration? Okay, all right.
No, 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 I thought you were.
That's a board decision.
No, 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 I thought you were giving me another example, I didn't mean, I wasn't saying, I wasn't saying, yes, I thought you were going to keep going, what you were saying.
Let me jump in here, I think the issue becomes one of movement, progress, and accountability. When you have a community who is, this is, and I'm harkening back to the illustrious old yacht club, three years ago, whatever, it seems like a century ago, I saw a stack of engineers, all choked, of course, talking about the condition of that building, and accountability for assessment of that situation was augmented, but it was augmented with advisory people from the community who had knowledge in the arena. It did not include anyone on the board for a very good reason. Board of directors ends up having to vote up or down on what is, is or isn't done with the results of these studies. It is a study, you have to understand where you are in order to perform. Now, we've already got engineering research for much of the drainage situation, it's already there, I have not read it word for word, it exists. So to me, it's a matter of giving Bob the impetus to access the advisory people who needs, Jim Bunting, community. My stumbling block, as I've shared with Jack and others, is for four years now, I have tried very hard to keep board members off of committees like this because we end up having to vote on what these committees propose or don't. If you end up being team created, your independence ability to assess what comes out of it is impossible. That does not say I'm against the idea, because I'm obviously not. I'm not a, you know, a drainage engineering expert. I think the idea of understanding where we are, which is what I don't think we know, is, I would suggest put it on the agenda for the next meeting, to have a discussion of what we do and don't know. It's a very similar approach we took for the yacht. What do we know and what don't we know about this situation? And then put together a game plan for moving forward, access the resources that are out and go do them, because it is correct. If you make it a board committee, it then becomes board responsibility to oversee it, administer it, and everything, and there is potential conflict, which we frankly don't need. That just by two cents, I think this can be resolved by gaining access to the advice without having the board take over the project, I don't think we need to.
First, we already have that responsibility.
Ultimately, we do, when we do.
Secondly, the task force that did that building prepare, it includes, and it went better than what we're looking at right now in this take-up situation, yacht club. It was done, it went, it couldn't go on any better, okay? Yes, I'll leave it up to them, because they want to be co-chair, but if they're not willing to go forward with the motion, I will, there will be a motion for a task at the next rate group. And last, between now and then, somebody tells me, here's what we've done, here's what we're doing, and here's how we're going to fix it. I've heard nothing since I got sued by Martha in 2008, as did every director.
Well, here's where I'm coming from, Marty. You know, one of the things I ran on was this issue, I ran on this issue and it resonated. Now, it resonated for a purpose, for a reason. So Terry, I, you know, I would ask you to think about what the, what the people who voted in that last election cycle said to this board about this particular issue. Because I did not make it a secret as to where I was coming. Personally, you know, I think, I think your approach is a better approach, I don't know how we get there and that would involve Bob Thompson and, you know, we would like to have Bob Thompson involved in this process and I think that it would, it would do this community a lot of good and it would do this organization a lot of good. That way, if I'm reading you correctly, that way, it's really not a board function and he and I can get involved and keep the promises that we made to the folks that voted for us. Is that what I'm hearing you say? Is that what I'm hearing you say? If we, if it does not become a board.
That's why I want to add clarification, because we're exchanging words committees and task force. Committee in my mind is like the aquatics committee, the parks and ress committee, and that's standing, are you not asking to establish a standing committee on drainage?
Short term, be over by June.
Short term.
Short term.
Task force to work in conjunction with what the general manager has done to date and see where we are, what we've done, what do we need to do next? And the advisors to the general manager.
That's fine, but as far as serving on the task force, voting in the task force and all that stuff.
That's fine. That's not our function and I think that's a good idea, I think, I think that's a good idea.
So this is what you're asking for, is a task force with possibly liaisons on it?
And in that regard, we would want some input from the members of this board as to who should serve on that task. I mean, who, who would you like to see on this staff?
Golf task force, every director is allowed to be, or five people.
Okay.
So, it'll be up to them to choose.
I will take on responsibility, now that I think we're putting together a skeleton, what this looks like, sharing it with everybody who can, so have a sense of where I'm going. It's a motion, we might push it, do.
And I may still make a motion and trump you, but keep mine, I'll be happy to share with you the makeup of golf task force and that, really golf task, it was exactly.
Maybe the two of you will work together.
And it's great.
May we move on from this topic? Okay, anybody in the round room, comments? 30 seconds.
My first inclination to be opposed is the function of the general, they can take care of drainage. The board is not happy with what the federal manager is doing. The board of directors who sets policy should tell the general manager what you want him to do and when you want it done and give him some deadline. You never seem to do that, but this is clearly his purview. Now, you can get yourselves all involved in this, a lot of buster, and there are three people who are already involved in this, who, as Tom said, are invested in voting yes and whatever this group decides to come up with. You're like, I convinced one of the person to go, oh. This idea of working, I think, I don't know. Marty, you said that there was an RFP for some aerial mapping, that hasn't been granted yet?
I haven't seen it.
We've got vision, they're very, they all came in different, before engineering. Let me remind you, Bob, this is where the board is, you told the board about getting that aerial mapping done, probably over three months ago. We put it out big. I know what I did, don't get mad, I'm answering, you do not want me to answer. I'm not getting mad at you. Point is, it's been a long time since you told the board you were going to go do that, for whatever reasons, as of today, is not done. It's that simple. Kind of like Obamacare, you know, they have three areas.
Actually, don't compare it to Obamacare, it's done, it's on my desk, it hasn't been analyzed because they all.
No, no, hang on, Joe, first what I, I'll answer you. So if I give it to you in the three or four different things that we receive, the different proposals for the work to be done, people like you are going to analyze it and you're going to start pulling pieces out before we've had the opportunity to actually understand it and make a recommendation, which then clouds the issue. So instead of racing through it, we have them, if the board says, I want to see them and take action on them, again, like Jack was just saying, wants to, whatever they want to do, they can do, I'm okay with that, but if you're going to trump what we're trying to work on, give it to you in a reasonable process, then what you get is what you get. I cannot go back and then, you know, put it in a reasonable format if you scramble it up before we can, that's all. It's done, they're sitting on the corner of my desk.
Okay, let's move on.
You just gave these people a reason to go ahead and create their committee. No, I actually did not.
Joe, good points, thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, we have a guest speaker who has arrived and I don't want to hold him up, so maybe switch back in gears to the, to the, the agenda. Steve Cohen is on the.
Acting.
Acting as the, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Steve.
Acting.
Acting.
Acting committee. I'm sorry, oh yeah.
Would you two gentlemen like to come join us at the table? This is Dr. Derek.
Dr. Derek, University of Salt Lake.
Thank you, sir, pleasure. Please have a seat.
I'd also like to introduce our members, a new member, Slovadon Terek?
Trending.
Trending. And this is Tom.
Thanks for coming, guys, appreciate it. Thank you for being here for that.
My pleasure. Did everybody see the memo that Dan sent out to everybody? And then there's a, I think I sent it out, a little biography.
Steve, unless you go ahead and start us off?
Well, part of the comprehensive plan, we've constructed for a couple of years and thanks to Dan, we've got Dr. Derek's name, we've met with Dr. Garrett twice, and I think he can be a tremendous help to us as to setting out a plan, has a lot of.
First of all, thank you very much for giving that opportunity, shared a couple ideas with you, but before I get started, need to get most important piece of business out of the way. What you'll not see in that bio is that for two years, mom was at Ocean Pines and I love every minute of it. Teal circle rocks.
That's it, you're hired.
Why, because he lived here or?
That's, that's better than the mom, it's better to live here.
At this day, some of our nicest memories are at that little canal there, so we love it. Beacon is the Business Economic and Community Outreach Network of the Franklin P. Purdue School of Business at Salt Lake University. We were founded, actually, I'm the founding director, I started it in 1989, at the time when I thought I was going to be on the shore only two, maybe three years. At that time, Frank Purdue told me, if I survive the one year, I'm never leaving, and he's absolutely right, I have my plot selected, my insurance bond and everything. The reason for existence for Beacon is really twofold, one is a state mandate, state requires all publicly funded institutions to do economic development, develop workers, develop those kinds of assistance activities on a cost recovery basis throughout the state. The second, to us, more important reason Beacon exists is, it is a lab, if you will, a clinic where our students get practice before they graduate. where our students get practice before they graduate, particularly our graduate students. In the past twenty-five years, we've done studies ranging from the simple strategic clients to very sophisticated economic models, resource allocation models, scenario models, et cetera. One of the things we're very proud of is our GeoDash initiative. The GeoDAP initiative uses sophisticated economic and decision modeling to enable decision makers, whether they're in the private sector or public sector, the information they need to base their decisions on. We don't make the decisions. We don't make recommendations for the decisions, but we provide the answers to the questions that decision makers need to have answers to before being sufficiently informed about consequences of their decisions under a variety of assumptions. This is called scenario analysis. And until about ten years ago, it was available only to mega corporations because the kind of firepower required to do it was in the big computers. With the improvement of PC systems and the software available today, those same previously fifty thousand dollars a year and above kinds of software is available for under a thousand. So at Salt River University, we do have three different pieces of software that we use together to look at the consequences of future decisions. What if we decide this? What if we decide this? What if part of it this way, part of it that way? So those what-if types of questions, we simulate the future under a variety of assumptions, and we're able to answer those questions. We've done this for hospitals trying to buy other hospitals. We've done it for zoning changes. We've done it for in, um, commercial slash residential developments to determine what percentage should be commercial, what percentage residential, generate the highest amount of tax income for a particular, uh, location while providing profits for the developer. Done it for the state. We've done it for lots of corporations, uh, nonprofit organizations, government agencies. The reason for which it's done is varied. The methodology used is fairly simple. It is literally building an economic and statistical model of what happens in a locality or in a project and pushing it out one, three, and five. In those kinds of scenarios, although I have to admit, we just finished for the, um, Port Authority of New York for the JFK Airport. We just finished a version of it that extends it twenty-five years. Eighty-five percent, um, predictive accuracy. That is phenomenal. You know, eighty-five doesn't sound like great, but look at it. It's going twenty-five years. Um, we're not offering that here because that, that cost, that is costing the state of New York about fifty thousand dollars. Um, but we have this capability. Our students, our graduate students who work on these projects, they run rings around me. They think I'm the boss, but in reality, they really know what's happening. They say much better tonight. We bring them to the situation. They have no idea as to where the sacred cows are. They don't know your issues. They're not involved in your decision process. They're just simple numbers. And they say, here are the consequences for the homeowners, for the association as a whole, for the county, whatever questions you're asking, the, the answers are there. It, again, let me reiterate as carefully as I can. It doesn't tell you do this versus. You ask the question saying, what would happen if we did X? The computer then on the spot, based on the model they have developed, calculates it, projects it onto the screen. While you're sitting here, they're able to do sliding of the, the little sliders, give you the answers. They deal with fees versus taxes. They deal with capital versus operational. Whatever you can build in an economic model, it has the capability of building these three softwares chained together. Yes, sir?
Doctor, it's a good point. The assumptions then based on our question?
The assumptions, well, before we come to that meeting, we do extensive preliminary research. We talk, we, we have access to data, then we talk to key opinion leaders in the community, in the county. We ask questions such as, um, let me give you the example of the, the hospital purchase one. What would be the changes in doctor salaries? What would be the changes in patient fees, et cetera? We create what are called viable ranges of likelihoods. That goes into the model.
Reason I ask is we're in a very odd duck.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty percent of our membership in the circle are either second homeowners, investors, they don't live.
Right.
And one hundred percent of what you're going to talk to, uh, excuse us.
It does, but, but as long as we know the distributions, the, the, your model has the ability to adjust for that.
You know, did you know that Salt River did a demographic study for us in ninety-six?
Yeah, a couple.
It literally eliminated, it came right, it knew. I mean, they knew right up front, and everything came back.
You would be very, very scared if I told you how much we know about anybody in the, in the United States.
Well, you know that much is up here. You know, it's on the shirt.
He wouldn't answer the question. Yeah, really. Here's, here's the scary. We all carry these. Okay? These little things. We all have these. And we all have the credit cards and debit. Okay? Anytime you go to any store, you use either this, or this, or any one of these. Your purchase is being recorded, and it's being sent to two companies, the state of Illinois, only to the nation. They compile that information. They sell it to re-packagers. We buy it from those re-packagers. Not only do we know in any side of any zip plus four street, how many diapers were bought last month, but we also know on the aggregate how much. We cannot say who bought it, but we can say on this side of your street, this many were bought. And we can say of those who bought those, this percentage also bought this baby shampoo. Let me tell you something. Know where you are.
Is, is this a form of artificial intelligence?
It, it really is.
It is?
It really is. It is what, the.
How macro the input was? How, how large is the input influencing this artificial intelligence? Is it statewide?
Yeah, we have the capability right now in, in what we do. We have the capability of going, um, regional very easily and national.
What do you mean by regional?
For example, the mid-Atlantic. Select five states, et cetera. The only, um, limiting factor is the size of the memory. When I go beyond a certain memory, it gets very expensive. But this little baby can do the, the five-state region. So doing an, an OPA is nothing to it. It essentially, what you do is you literally sit in front of a map, an activated map, and you draw the boundaries of the OPA. And it extrapolates the data from the Worcester County data for that one.
The other thing is, I, I gave Dr., I don't know, it went around, I think ninety-seven, ninety-eight, there was a survey done. Zach gets, uh.
Doctor.
Doctor.
Yes, Mark. I gave that to him. I'm not sure how much has changed since then, you know? Very little. There's questions about, you know, what they want, so that would help. The other thing, I, um, we went through the census from two thousand to two thousand ten, and we were surprised that, uh, the age in Ocean Pines got seven years older, and there are less kids, believe it or not, in the ten years. So I went around talking to, you know, uh, Dr. Handelman, what he needs, the pool and everything else. That's all can be put in.
And, and we can actually improve significantly on census data. Because again, we have the purchase patterns. So if somebody's buying consistently comic books and, you know, certain types of milk or whatever, I can tell the age of the children in that part of the street. So census might be whoever was there when the census takers came versus I can tell you what happened two months ago.
And I know very little about what you do. I will be honest with you. But if we're projecting now, ten years from now, what we want to see or what we think needs to be done for Ocean Pines, do we expand this, or do we limit this, or what needs? How do you see it in the future? I mean, I could see, you know, right now, there's so many people buying diapers, or so many people buying comic books. But how do you know what the future trends are going to be?
Um, there, there are, very good question. There are algorithms that are created for each part of the United States. There are three thousand counties, and within each county, there are census blocks and census traps. Each of those, there's a company called Minnesota Implant that creates what's called a social account. That is determining all the time how things change in that. We know by, for example, if there's a person of a certain age, a certain percentage of them in five years are going to pass on. We know a certain percentage are going to move, like seventeen percent mobility for this area, we already know. We know what percentage is likely to have children based on their age, their gender, et cetera. So the model looks at trends of what's happening and what's coming in, looking at the changing, for example, changing the ethnic mix. If you have more people coming in, say, from a Latino background or a Catholic background, they're likely to have more children than, et cetera. So all of that is built in, and it, and then, beauty of it is, every year, it validates itself. It looks at what it predicted last year, looks at what's now, and says, okay, what did I get right? What did I get? And the model itself, every year, gets updated. We buy that model from Minnesota for our area, and we use that. And Minnesota provides one, three, five, ten, twenty-year predictions. We don't buy the twenties, that's, unless you're dealing like an airport there, I can do it because it's cargo. It's not human beings. But I can do the one, three, five, and ten based on what the model's.
The challenge that I see on, uh, the guy that's seven years older, that's absolutely true. But you also have to understand that a major impact happens that throws off natural trends. When you put a park in the middle of Ocean Pines in the last eleven years, put fifty-five older automatically, everybody who lives there. So trending, I, I just don't want to overplay the ideas for seven years.
No, I'm just throwing, I throw that as an example.
The other piece, no, it's fine. I just, I have some background. The other piece of this, and the struggle with this, what I would like to understand is how you're going to manage. Is because what we really are trying to determine is what do our members want? And how should we be investing our money? What are the, there, there's clearly census trends that will give us an idea of how old we're going to get. And since we're almost already built out, completing footprint, current yield, uh, that's not a announcement of the problem, it's just reality. We are built out at this point, uh, we're not going to have another park built that automatically projects a, a, which kind of, yeah, on that. But how are, how can we utilize your services with some of our own usage data? Like how, how many people are using our swimming pools, you know, whatever the data we have? Sure, definitely, God. But how do we marry that in with the census assessment? Because Marty was absolutely correct. Fifty percent of our membership is invested here. They may not live here.
Right.
So, you know, they, the general natural growth of a community, I do echo. How do you, how would you manage that? How does that work?
We don't provide the answer to what the members would think, would have.
Okay.
No crystal ball for it.
All right.
But anytime you ask decision makers whether they're homeowners or their representatives, something about the future, their ability to answer that question is improved if they have more information. So we clarify the jumble of information into simpler trends, simpler what-ifs. If your assessments went up this way, what would happen? If your fee went up this way, what happened? This fee versus this tax.
Talking about the tar and feathering, but.
Correct. But, but, you know, it provides, and, and you know from economic development, when you're asking people to make decisions about the future, as much they know about that future, the easier that decision is. That's what.
I just wanted to tell that.
And that, that's what we were struggling with because, you know, um, we didn't have the data to say, okay, we had information what they wanted, but if people wanted something, does it mean that we can provide it? Or should we provide it? Or should we provide it?
And this, this looks at the various scenarios. Queen Anne's County, there's a development where they are trying to make decisions about one particular water development. And there are questions, legitimate questions. Should they develop a portion of the water away? Should it be fifty percent or seventy percent set aside for green space? Should they be zero lot versus regular lots? You know, what should the mix between the single-family townhomes and apartments? Uh, should there be, um, commercial facilities at the entrance of the place? Or should it be kept simply residential? And each of those scenarios generates a different reaction from. But unless they know what each of those scenarios leads to in terms of traffic impact, in terms of environmental impact, in terms of economic impact, fiscal impact, it's difficult to make those decisions. It's difficult to visualize. What we do is we, we actually visualize it for you. We put it in very graphic, we don't give you pages and pages of numbers. It's actually colorful graphics that show. And when somebody's, let's say, you say, well, you know, we're thinking of going fewer, um, single-family, more multifamily. What percentage, let's increase it five percent, see what happens? Those kinds of things. What would be the impact on infrastructure needs? What is the economic placement cycles? All those kinds.
Looking at beyond the bounds of pollution. So. Because we are clear in fact, I, we have access to grocery stores, and we have access to creation, school system. Um, how would you help us? It's not that, as an example, we don't control what happens across five-day lawn, but what might happen there clearly drive and impact us. How can your numbers of us assess that?
This baby is dumbest thing in this room. Okay? It knows nothing but zeros. It only knows zeros and ones. Okay?
Yeah.
But we, based on conversations with you, give it a task. That task is based on the questions to which you want answers. If one of the ten, when we ask you a three, 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 one, set up, what are the three questions that this project must absolutely answer? What is the next three? What is the three that, you know, be nice to know but not critical? And one, we call it a wild. You know, I died and went to heaven, and I found the answer to this. We do that deliberately because at the beginning, we even don't know. But we, we set, program it that way. If one of the things you want the model to look at is the access to commercial facilities in the region at a certain, um, give you up to three concentric circles, let's say one mile outside the limits, three miles, five miles, whatever, whatever those concentric circles are, we can set and then do that. And we can also do predictions as to what is the likelihood based on prevailing market trends for another grocery store. You have to remember that practically every commercial development around here has already hired us to answer these kinds of questions. Every time they've had a lawsuit and fighting each other, one or the other has already hired us. So our knowledge of this area, and, you know, the, the good, the bad, and the ugly, is fairly extensive. And that information, because they're done all with. Everything we do is partially funded by the state's investment in the students because we don't pay the students their true value. They get, uh, they get four, uh, four thousand dollars a semester, stipend, they get free tuition, which is substantial, but remember, but remember, these are university. These are university graduates already. They're graduate students. Their market value is fifty thousand, paying them thirty-six. When you add everything up, paying. So we're getting them at a discount because they're learning the process. The difference between those two is a public investment. So the data we do in the aggregate is public. So every project we've done in the past, including grocery penetration, restaurant penetration, all of those things were, and understand it because of the proximity of Ocean City, we do a lot. We do a little lesson, the Pokemon. Down to Newark, we do a lot, and then Salt River. We would be, if that's one of the questions you ask us.
Who owns the Climb Phantom?
You do. We do. The data we collect, however, in the aggregate, is publicly available. What we. What we do is when we sign a memorandum of understanding with you, we say, we jointly own the data, you own the study.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I ask the timeframe to accomplish something, please?
Um, depends on your questions. Some of your questions can be very quickly due. In our world, very quickly, you're dealing with students is about thirty days. In other cases, maybe it's a little bit more, gonna require a little bit more digging. None of our studies goes beyond ninety days because we use the students. The typical timeframe for a study is forty-five days. Uh, but again, it depends after we sit down with you and say, you determine what those ten questions are, come back and say, well, we're gonna need a little bit more, no, we already have this. Assume it's gonna be thirty-nine days, as a matter of policy.
And then at, next year, is there an update available?
Um, when you bring us in, there's a twelve-month aftercare there. That's, that's for all of our projects. Twelve hours in the next twelve months, we, if part of that time toward the end of the twelve-month period must be updated, you know that. Otherwise, we will quote you, that's what, beginning, what the update, the, the, update fees are significantly lower. The actual cost is designing, uh, update, updates usually, let's say for the sake of argument, I'm not talking about the old project, more generic. The project is fifteen thousand dollars to do, the update is gonna be fifteen hundred. Because that's gonna be done by one, made two graduate assistants simply thing. That's not, and we don't recommend annual updates. A lot of this data has shelf life. We recommend every two years or so, probably. So if we say the update is a thousand dollars, in reality, it's five hundred.
And then the important questions, kind of fees.
That's gonna again be determined on the basis of those ten questions. That's part of what, what we do is once we get that idea, we cost how many hours? We have, um, our hourly rates are two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the whole team. But anything we do in the state of Maryland, any kind of public entity, and finally you as a public entity, is half that. So we would cost how many hours? So fifteen times hundred and twenty-five. Uh, studies of this sort range anywhere from four thousand dollars to fifteen thousand.
I'm sorry, four thousand to what?
Four thousand to fourteen thousand. So, and I, I cannot get any more precise than that because I really don't know what is gonna be three, you know, one month version or the three month version. That is gonna be determined.
What are the three questions we have?
That's, that's.
That's the wild card.
As the wild card. Um, the, for organizations like this, we also offer at, at no interest time. It's like you can say, over the next twelve months, we're gonna pay you a thousand dollars instead of cash for places. We're the university, we're not going anywhere. The seventy percent of the fees we generate to the student's tuition, there's stipends of thirty-six thousand, I should, and twenty-four students on the program that we take care of. Uh, and then ten percent goes to the university for the rent they charge us essentially for having our offices. And the remainder is compensation for me and two other providers.
Is there a chance for the community foundation grants with us or something you mentioned?
Yes, you, you would be able to apply to the community foundation up to six thousand dollars for assistance with this. Especially if you're providing some of the funding, likelihood of getting that increases. Those funds are offered, are, are distributed twice a year. Uh, one in the October timeframe and one March or April.
Getting in, we do, this kind of community foundation.
Um, you actually, you're, you're better off not being incorporated to get, you're, you're a nonprofit.
That's not my design.
Yeah, because I know, for example, I'm also the president-elect of the Salisbury Area Chamber of Commerce. We as the chamber cannot apply but our foundation.
Doctor Farmay, uh, getting, getting back to these patterns?
Yeah.
That have been set up in the artificial intelligence? Is there anything that can disrupt those patterns or change those patterns?
Hurricanes.
That would significantly change the results of any?
Yes, there is, but we can put a dummy variable forth, so we can say.
I think that's where you were going, right, Tom?
No, I was just trying to explain, you can have major changes in a community that change the dynamic.
Well, I'm thi, I'm thinking about something that occurs maybe at the legislative level?
We can, we can, we call those disruptors.
That's part of it.
What about racetrack?
Right.
See, we call those disruptors, and we can, we can add up to three disruptors that, that might interact. Because it could be that there's a disruptor event, but maybe there's an influx of cash from the state to mitigate that. So we can put the two together and see how they play with each other.
One of the examples you might, but, yeah, and I, is, you know, we get money off of casinos, yeah, but we don't get in money off of table games, this is the way to pass the ball. So we could have an impact, could have an impact, revenue coming into us as people transition from, over to table games, at least for a while. Uh, so that can be a game, not a huge game changer, but it can, in fact, as you know, have that aimed at roads. And if all of a sudden that starts dropping, so.
Right.
But what-if scenario here is very, uh, very interesting.
And the model doesn't predict it, it won't say it will happen, it will say, if it happens.
If it does, yes.
Here's how it would.
Yeah. Yeah, it needs input.
Yeah, and you can, exactly, and you can provide.
G I G O, right?
Probably, exactly. My, I live by those, those initials.
Do you have access to information on transit industries like swimming pools, golf, versus G I clubs, restaurants, all that kind of thing?
Every, um, we have, the social accounting matrix is based on, uh, in excess of nine thousand categories of industry or economic activities. Four thousand of it are the next votes. But then we go beyond that, we go to the agricultural stuff, we go to the national stuff. We don't do that, that, we buy that from, you know, they're sort of.
Righteous stuff.
Yeah, exactly. That's how they make their, you know, that. One set of that data that we buy for years, thirty thousand dollars, we buy it every year and then use it on.
Got it. Mansion work versus work to four or fourteen thousand dollars.
Uh, generically, but we can add little bells and whistles, but that would be the generic or the general direction, yes, sir.
And you're still here with Ocean Pines. Give me an example type of question, three, first, three, highest priority type of question we would ask, so I understand.
I'll give you the one that, that my mom asked me about when she used to live there. Should this place become any rated?
A what?
And the first question she asks is, what would it mean to?
And there's two questions.
Well, that's the, that, one is the question for the Minnesota, for the organization.
Right.
The other is for her. You're asking the questions as the organization. But if you wanted to know that other one as well, that you're, yeah. Yeah, and that, that's, that was her, you know, that was her question. What, will I pay more or less? And what would I give if I pay more? What would I get for it? If I pay less, what am I giving off? She's, she's pretty savvy.
Give us the, the one answer, it's obviously gonna lead to two or three other questions we're gonna have.
We're okay. But we don't, we don't consider the sub-questions as, as problems. It's the bigger issues.
So the ten questions we have are the high, are, are the main questions, but if there are other questions that come out.
Invariably, there's gonna be that.
That's where we, we get that, that's part of the overall.
I mean, the moment you say incorporation versus fees, that's the main two branches, but the tree has many more branches underneath.
Exactly. And that's where I was looking, you know, that's where we're coming back and getting more.
We will work that. One of the things we require if we are engaged with this, for you to create a committee that's gonna work with us. These are the people who are available to us by cellphone, by email, because we're gonna be asking a lot of questions. And a lot of the questions relate to, is this giving you the answers? How do you want to see it? So we'll be able to do the branches together as long as we agree on the majors. One thing, and let me clarify, you give us ten questions, that doesn't mean that's what we're working. Come back and we'll say, this one we cannot do. Okay? They'll say, however, if you restate this question in this way, we will be able.
And what kind of ten people, patients they need? Citizens you want, four members you want, apartment heads, what, what, who, who are you talking about?
We, we definitely want at least one person who is an employee, sufficient knowledge for position. So you're looking at one of the top three. That person is their, because invariably, they're gonna be positive information. Obviously, from decision-making body and rescue thing. You wanna bring somebody from the county, fine, if not, we go to that person anyway.
Any other questions around the table?
I would, I would just hope to, when our supply, next earlier, our GARP, 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 people are providing that information for our folks. Back, this is questions, doubt, seven, not to minorities, like, with all due respect.
I, I know, I, not only.
I think the municipality questions are throwaway.
Um, but you, you, you put your finger on a very, very important distinction. We are not here to resolve political.
Absolutely.
We're here to simply give you the math of what-ifs. So one of the things we very strongly urge, I mean, we'll work with whoever you give us. But we strongly urge people not to make the mistake of trying to be equitable, have X number of people from this thought and Y number of people from that thought. We, we need the bureaucrats, okay, we need the technocrats, because this is about numbers. We need the people who have numbers, who have access to the information. After that, you do the other. Because this is not, this is not the place to fight the opinions, this doesn't have opinions.
For those that don't remember, eighty-six demographic study in Ocean City, hands down, everybody was just full build, final product. And I think everyone was whooped, galloped, galloped two years early. And their computers would not answer questions because.
This will not be a survey to, to the people.
No, this, this is not a survey, no.
This is not a demographic.
This is using available information.
The students did it. It's just.
And that's something we're very proud of. Ninety percent of the work is done by graduate students. We supervise it, work on it, but they are really our greatest assets, they are our stars. They have this incredible enthusiasm and the beauty of it is they have no idea what impossibility is. I'll sit there and look at it and say, yeah, and don't waste time on that, and say, why not? And then they'll come with an answer and embarrass me, and I like being embarrassed that way. It's, it's such a empowering thing to work with these young, because by this time in their careers, they're no longer like undergrad students, they know what they want, there's a reason why they're doing graduate studies, they have skin in the game. You know, our undergraduate students, we love them to pieces, but.
But, but, Dr. Jerker, just so you know, the board at first asks the questions they have. Now we go around to rule anybody's membership that has any particular questions. Is there anybody that has something they'd like to ask? Thirty seconds.
Quit picking on Jeff.
The, uh, cost of this sounds pretty reasonable. I have a few things to say, but it, it may be something we get done parts because it is relatively expensive. My concern would be after it's done, whether we can rely on the information. Appears to me this involves three primary things, the census data, the purchase data, and questions. Now, the census data can deceive you here because, for example, somebody said we're seven years old, that's not true. Only the people who live here are seven years old.
Let me interrupt just one second. We don't use census.
Okay.
We use metadata, one of the sources of which was census.
Okay, got you.
We use IRS data.
I'm just using that example of how this community is different than.
Correct, and then, trust me, I know with my mom.
Um, the, uh, on the purchase data, if I'm a homeowner in Wilmington, Delaware, and I have a summer home down here and I come down here for the summer, everything I purchased on my credit card, who knows? Up in Wilmington, it'll be credited to Wilmington.
Yes and no. Remember I said, when you're scanning it, it tells me where the purchase happened.
I know where it happened, but you don't know, if I buy something down at Walmart, how would you associate? And I live in Wilmington, that's where my home address is, where my credit, well, I have no idea it's connected to Ocean Pines.
I do. Um, there are two ways I do. One is if you own the property here as a second property. I'm already associating the, the fact that you have property and you're purchasing here. Not as you personally, but in the aggregate. This number of the people who have part year residence in this because of tax records, because we have access to property tax records.
Oh, you were able to coordinate it with the guy in Wilmington, you know he owns a house here?
Correct. In fact, we don't know the individual, but we know what percentage of the homeowners here are from.
Oh, you only know a percentage, okay.
Et cetera. Because it's illegal for us to know individual. Federal laws prevent us from saying, it's you doing that. The second thing we know is, we also know percentage of individuals who might not own, but live here for two weeks, let's say. In the summer, they rent through one of these rentals. We also have that information, variety of tax records, variety of, um, data that state already collects. The dues they pay, it could be, um, gas they bought that connected through it, et cetera. But we don't do it, you know, it's you, it's you in the aggregate.
So you're familiar with Ocean Pines?
Yes, sir.
You know exactly what's going here, pretty much, not exactly, but.
No, dear.
Uh, I think what, I haven't heard press, what if comprehensive plan, really? Do, I'm not so sure, no.
Well, that's why we say.
And that's where the questions come in.
Correct.
And the questions, the questions end up, whether you rightly or wrong, nobody's fault, questions come from.
There's, there's, I, I agree. I wish I couldn't erase that, I can't. But there, you know, anytime you're doing public policy decision-making, there's gonna be the P O L part. Polit, taste policy part. So while it makes it difficult for you all to make the decisions, it doesn't change the way I build the project. Well, you said G I G O. It is G I G O, but you can also have diamond at the end that can be used to shatter glass or get the lady you're looking. Okay, so it's not just what we give you, what we, what you then do with what we give is gonna be just as. Fortunately, by then, you've paid us and we're not here.
I like that. Mary's.
Is there anybody else? Sure, George.
I assume that since we are a community of twelve miles of canals, you've taken consideration of rising water.
Yes. Um, that's automatically built in because anytime you're dealing with waterfront communities, there is the natural, uh, disruptors that is part of it. That's, anytime we do something in Ocean City, anytime we do, for example, something in Vail, Colorado with a snow, um, with snow-related disasters, that's already built. That is part of the potential outcomes that the model is.
And hurricanes?
Hurricanes, of course, in this area. In fact, we use the same data that insurance companies use for their bacterial studies.
I'm sorry, Tom, yes?
Yeah, have you, uh, in the number of years that you've been doing these studies, have, uh, remember any that you have done concerning golf courses, the golf business?
We've, we've done several. In fact, we're members of the National Golf Foundation, we contribute to their database. Um, we've worked with Worcester County, we've worked with Queen Anne's County, we've worked with Dorchester County. We did the economic impact estimation for Hyatt. We, uh, looked at a potential golf facility in Queen Anne's County. We looked at, uh, a golf community, uh, in Kent County, uh, Wackamook County, yeah, we are. That is an area, fortunately, it's an area that doesn't have the same, uh, impact it used to have unless you bundle the available opportunities. What I'm trying to say is instead of one golf facility, if five or six of them come together and provide a package, it's kind of the prevailing system.
Has Worcester County done any study?
On golf? Yes. Um, a way, a while back, they looked at, um, the potential tourism impact of, uh, golf tourism, golf.
And is that available for our review?
It's, it's public study, I'll have to do. I'll tell you, though, by this time, it's useless. It's too much time, yeah. And the nature of the golf industry has changed.
Because our location, we are the largest residential year-round community in the entire county, you have a big impact on it. Does this take into effect the projections of how the county will be growing, or is there, has the county done a recent study?
Um, I'm, I'm sure the county has done, as part of its comprehensive plan, analysis of that. The data we buy has that. Because it looks at the, uh, what they, agglomerations, whether they are incorporated or not. Largest agglomerations are treated as units, and they take, for example, even the, even, uh, commercial Newark, Maryland, schools that sit there, so it's all taken. So that, like I said, the amount of information, the, the federal government after nine eleven came to the people we buy our data from. That tells you how much information.
Got a, got a quick question. Um, just, just reading, hearing what you've said so far, the statistical analysis, data, everything that, uh, uh, the study's supposed to do. It, um, it gives me an impression that it really has a dual purpose. It's either a problem-solving tool, or it's a, uh, a, a social tool. So, um, I'm just wondering what kind of passport done, is private sector or public sector? Where, uh, your study, your statistical model that you have up, has been used in both cases. In other words, it's been used to solve certain problems, because we as a community perhaps have some issues on the table that we want to solve. And therefore, your modeling can enable us to do that. And then, fast forward to comprehensive planning, ten years, where do we be? And I guess the questions that come up, uh, would, would be critical in.
Sure.
Addressing both, and I was just curious in what, how often do you see them done in both cases?
Several come to mind, um, the most recent one would be Queen Anne's County Matterby Industrial Park. Uh, Matterby Industrial Park was the location of, um, Big Bay Model, if you're familiar with the Big Bay Model, one, one. With the computerization data, so they, the, the state owned that large property. County said, sell this to us for one dollar. And we have the ability to put in immediately, three, um, tenants in there, turn it into industrial park, and then in the future, this is what we intend. So that part was the problem solved. Should it be sold? Should it be one dollar? What would be the state's benefit? But the second part was now Queen Anne's County, the, went front door to public horse, the governor, the comptroller, and treasurer. And they answered, they asked these kinds of questions, who had answered the dashboard. And after they approved it, the sale was completed, now the Queen Anne's County, the aftercare, saying, okay, we have two of the three that said that we have come in, the third one fell through. What should we put in? Who else should be go after? We did something similar in, uh, Delaware, one particular, uh, community there had already done tremendous amount of, uh, infrastructure building. And they were doing a public-private partnership to build a medical cluster. And so the first question was, who should be in there? What should be, they be charged? What fees, what, uh, should it be a co-op, should it be some kind of corporation, nonprofit, et cetera? The second part is, they had, after it was okay, they said, okay, now, what other infrastructure do we? Should that be a road, should that be broadband, this kind of. So usually, these things are not one time, but there's the, called the tail. After the twelve-month aftercare is over, they come back and they say, you know, we've been talking about your thing, but now we need you to answer this question. Usually it's at, at the public sector, counties, et cetera.
The question that.
Yeah, it, it, it seems to me that in order for you to even, uh, submit a proposal, you would need a basic understanding of what it is the organization representative board is trying to achieve. Even though what client, potential client wants, right? In that regard, to what extent you need those questions, uh, fine, prioritized, before you even submit a proposal?
Uh, how do you go about? Correct, it's a three-step process. Once the organization, whatever organization we're working with decides they wanna work with us, we have an initial meeting. In that initial meeting, we try to quantify and qualify what the project and the scope of work. But before we finalize that scope of work, we say, this is our understanding of what's going on, what you want us to do. Now go do your homework, give us those ten questions. Then, we use those answers plus the work jointly did to build. At that point, it's no longer a proposal, it's a memorandum of understanding.
Only then, yeah, you've described the process.
And that's what.
Only then can you actually be responsive to.
And, and, and it's very important to, to say that this is not a predictor. This is not saying this is what's going to happen. It's probably the third time I'm saying it, because I wanted to crystal clear. By no means is this, this a forecasting. It only says if a certain path is followed, this is the likely outcome, under these assumptions.
Under certain circumstances.
Exactly.
One other quick question, if you are working with graduate students, you're working in the school calendar year. So what would be the timeframe, let's just say we decided we wanna go ahead and pursue this?
You have to bring up the vein of my existence, don't you? I wish I could fail them so they could stay alone. No, we stack, we have students that are one-year grad students, two-year grad students. So every team has stacked students.
All right, so in other words, it could be if we came on in January, if we came on June, it wouldn't make any difference.
The only, the only important date for us is August fifteenth. Graduate students aren't twelve-month students, they're not, uh, academic students, they work for us twelve months, as I mentioned, their, their employment. Changeover happens August fifteenth. Um, but we have sufficient numbers who are two-year students. Deal with that, but my, my number two and I, we dread August fifteenth to September fifteen, because that's when you're training the new group. And invariably, the senior ones in their year start boarding it over the new ones. But.
Like July.
Yeah. There you go.
Don't go.
The interns come.
They'll get sick in July first.
Don't go, for at least thirty days.
Thirty days, that's exactly. But yeah, we, we deal with it, we don't enjoy it, but it is, it is what it is.
Well, that's just because of our understanding of education. Do you have any question?
Yeah, just real quick, the process that you described a moment ago, during the process, how long is that process to even find the scope of this proposal?
It all depends on you, we can do it in one week. It depends on you guys.
For him?
Yeah. Our clock of the thirty to ninety days I mentioned doesn't start till that process is over.
Precisely. I think that was my.
Wait, Marty, forever.
Decide what it is, Mike has to decide what it is that we've accomplished, da-da-da, and then Mike take.
And then, once everybody's on the same page, our clock starts.
Well, I ask a question.
Trust me, I've been doing this twenty-five years, I don't start the clock till you guys are on the same page.
Dr. Jeriker, I really would thank you.
Some will say you hurry up.
And Steve, I'd like to thank him, uh, and the rest of the members that are here, I appreciate all this, very informative, very interesting.
We're gonna follow up based on what his report.
Thanks.
Then we'll put it in the company plan again, saying, this is what we think based on his statistics. Then the board will say, you know, yes or no, and things like that.
I thank you all for giving us an opportunity to share what my students can do. I look forward to working with you and having an excuse to come back here.
You don't need an excuse. You're always welcome, Steve, thank you.
You all take care now.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thank you. Okay, we have a few things you wanna move on a little bit quickly. Bob, I'm sorry, I skipped you earlier. Uh, just a brief update on the yacht club, Hingham Lane, and Taylor Bank.
All right, um.
Please.
Yeah, sure, Taylor Bank, uh, the work you see going on there, uh, they sent it out, given that some dance was, uh, basically that's where the, they're working down. Uh, connect times bonds with water and sewer, so that's, uh, county hired, county, county to that, so that's. Uh, Hingham Lane is in the last stage of completion of all that work. Uh, should be wrapped up from the, uh, all the piping, all the groundwork, all that should get wrapped up by the end of this. Paving will be, uh, repaving the area there where they disrupted, uh, will occur next few weeks, that's, that's weather permitting. So, that project's starting to wrap up. Yacht Club is, is, uh, I, I went out and checked today just for our meeting, you know, they're putting roof, uh, plywood on the roof, most of the siding, or siding, most of the sheathing on the outside. As well as, uh, the tieback first, uh, has all, uh, well completed, so all, all three projects, or our two projects. Taylor Bank, we should be wrapping up soon, our side.
Jack?
Uh, Bob, the, um, what, what was the thrust of the email that, that was on the three sixty-five? Something to do with, with windows, or doors, or something of that nature, on the first floor, and several other suggestions that this fellow made? What, what, what was, what was, what was that all about? You answered them, didn't you?
I got you.
Oh, you did, that was, that came from you, okay.
Oh, that was, yes, yeah.
It was one of our citizens wrote mail, basically suggesting, he had been at one of the first people, and that was reiterating some of the suggestions, and responding. Let him know downstairs, it has been enclosed and will be enclosed.
Oh, I see.
A lot of the things that he suggested before have in fact been, been incorporated in what we were doing.
I got you.
So that's what that was.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Certainly, this is, I'm sorry, the yacht club?
Yeah, yacht club, one other thing, um, I've got, uh, these covered, but the board that was up there with the colors, I haven't heard anything back from the directors of the boards, colors that we've recommended.
We made a motion.
Uh, no, we did not.
We did, but. We need to.
It was implied, I'm not working on, I am not working off of that.
Yeah, it was implied. I have two votes, that's right, Marty. We need a motion at the next meeting about the interior colors, could you want? Oh.
It's a directive, you can motion, you just say go, I don't want to say.
But we don't make motions here, so.
You have your.
You wanna do a motion, Tom? That'd be appropriate, yeah, okay. And, George, you had a question?
I just wanted to, you said the, uh, the sewer work is on county.
There's an easement.
An easement, all the way through that grass property?
Between our property and Taylor Bank property, there's. Right between, uh, our property above us up from Taylor Bank, right along that, that line, and then actually it goes down, you know, further into ours, but that's, there's, uh, uh, easement. I can't remember if that was ten and ten, or, I've been looking at a couple of easements, but there's easement on either side, and that's where the water and sewer pipes are going in.
So that if we ever built anything, we know where it was.
We know where it is.
We don't think we need it.
Yeah, part of, part of, uh, what they, they had more equipment on our side initially, part of the reason did that, uh, they did not wanna disrupt through Thanksgiving holiday by running the tractors back and forth, and the big piping and all. Uh, in, uh, by eight-nine, so they just, while they were on our side, stored most of it there, and if you see, they got all that cleared out beside the front door. Yeah, so they'll be wrapping up soon on our side.
And the easement was in front of the road, but not coming down.
Where the connect pipes. Thinking of easements, so, that was not happening. Have not. To give us rerouting.
How does that get resolved?
All, Bob's work, he's got the.
I mean, is it a board deci, it's a board decision?
It will be, yeah.
And there's some history on this?
I don't know what you mean by history, but there's.
Well, uh, that project has been kicked around for some time, right? You know, long before I was on this, correct? The Gillis project?
Yeah, he's bought it, he's had it, he's had it, it's failing target, just delayed the startup. So I sent you all an email with the, um, with the layout of what his.
Yes, yeah, right.
That's what we, that's all we, we're really, that's where we have any say, because it's crossing our property, and that's where I'm recommending, he takes it five.
He's just trying sewer, right?
And water. Sewer to, he's gotta cross our, cross the parkway to get the sewer to pump G, but the water can hit right at the park.
Right there about where the fence is, is that right? But he can get all of that, while for five a day done.
Terry, I think you're next on the agenda.
They're just like on paper. They're, they're in packets already, so just give. Okay. Alls I'm giving you is just some background information for you to peruse for the next word, we're gonna reintroduce code of conduct, be, be reintroduced, again. That, you know, don't expect to discuss it today, unless we have to, but I wanted you to have the information, that's, um. The last document there is from Dan, and he told the original code of conduct, what his thoughts and comments on.
What's the genesis of this?
Well, we used to have it, and we don't.
It was voted off. There was a code of conduct that was voted down.
Right, right.
Well, what's the genesis of this?
Well.
I mean, is there a problem?
No, but I think that there should, if you read the documents that's given you, not, it's not required to have a code of conduct, but it's, um, recommended there be a code of conduct in all of your.
Recommend?
Um, well, there are several, I only included one. While not mandatory, every homeowner says they should put a very specific application. This is, oh, we cut off. Management trust, it's a management. And it, it worked for years that it was in there.
It wasn't in there years, it was in there less than two years.
And then.
Spoke eloquently at the meeting when, when, when I checked. You know, five, twelve of my bylaws says exactly what they need.
Not to be accepted.
Says exactly what they need, you wanna get rid of a board, correct? Or, a, a, what is it, super majority?
But.
With cause.
But the code of conduct actually, um, goes into detail of what that conduct, what the conduct that it is expected, is, sorry.
And, am I gonna get an answer to my question? What is the genesis of this?
The genesis is.
I mean, why, why are we even considering this? Is there a problem?
No, there's no problem, but I would like to have it back. I think, I talked to a lot of other people, we would like to have it back.
Oh, you talked to other people on the board? I don't remember discussing it with you.
Well, I didn't talk to you.
Oh, okay, you just talked to him? Did you, how about this guy, you talked to him?
Jack, this is, this is not, that was the point, she is bringing, she's allowed to bring this up, as you were allowed to bring this up. She's done it, she's given you this, well, this will be pursued further.
If I'm, if, if I'm gonna consider this and vote on it, I need to know why.
Well, you need to look at it and read it and approach it with an open mind.
Because it was a part of, of what Ocean High's association, it was a part of our association. It is not, is no longer there.
I think, I think the thing that I saw was that this code of conduct was divisive, derisive. It created conflict within the board. That's the video that I saw, I'm not talking about this doc. I'm not talking about this doc. I'm not talking about this doc. So, so I, I'm trying to determine...
That's fine. So, um, so we should not be concerned with, uh, confidentiality, conflict of interest, courtesy, employment, gratuitities, fair dealing, funds and property of association, objectivity, violations, we should be concerned with that?
Not necessarily, if it's already in the bylaws, I think there are certain bylaws that indicate that if, if I'm involved in a decision, and, you know, I even have relatives that, that are involved, that would be affected within that decision, I'm not allowed to vote, or I shouldn't be vote, or that, or I have a conflict of interest.
I...
I mean, there are bylaws that govern us to keep us ethical.
Okay, and, and yes, they do, and I agree with that. I don't feel that they are specific enough.
They don't go far enough.
Correct.
You, you need, you need more control.
Well, it's not, I wouldn't have any control.
Not you personally.
Right.
No, general.
I don't have control, but I, I feel that it's important to have a code of conduct, and actually, several people have even mentioned, um, and these are just random community members, um, that we should have a, this code of conduct should include, uh, committee members and should include, um, you know, the, anybody who works within the organization.
Volunteers, volunteers, you know, it could be anybody. It could be my friend Pete over, you know, so, you know, if, if he has the wrong conversation with someone, could he be in violation of this code?
Depends on what his conversation is, I guess. I, I would think not, but, um...
I just don't want to see the board in a straitjacket, that's all.
I'm not sure, I, I don't think that's a straitjacket, I, these are pretty generally accepted principles and guidelines of conduct.
Uh, act in the community's interest, directors will strive for the common good of the homeowners association, foregoing personal interests, personal agendas will be left at home.
Okay, Jack, Jack, all, all she's doing at this point is presenting information, take it home, leave it open mind, and this is not meant to be a debate right now, or...
But, but, if he has a question, it is a valid question.
But it's a valid point, I mean, I'm not, I'm not poo-pooing the idea.
So I'm asking...
But, but it really has to be on solid ground if we're gonna be voting on this as a board.
Who's determining whether it's on solid ground or not?
Huh?
Who's determining whether it's on solid ground?
Well, I, I, I have to determine that for myself before I vote yes or no.
And then six of us also?
Yeah, 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 right, absolutely correct.
So what you just stated, it, it should...
I'm not allowed to have any personal opinions and, and any personal interest.
Well, it doesn't say you can't have personal interest or opinion, but it can't, it, it can't affect a decision that you make as part of this report.
Well, we just, we just had, you and I just had a conversation no more than probably an hour ago whereby you were wondering why we were bringing this strange thing forward when Bob was taking care of it, and that was a difference of opinion between you and I, so I have a personal opinion on that, and you have a personal opinion on that.
First of all, that was not my question. So, ergo, that was kind of a waste of time, I guess, but, Sharon is correct. I will be bringing the code of conduct back up as a motion, I'm giving you documentation, I'm giving you Dan's, um, input, I'm giving you some historical stuff, I'm giving you, uh, examples of other, um, HOA's codes of conduct, and we'll discuss it during discussion at the board meeting.
I, I surrender.
This is not meant to be the chat, I need to party. I, and Marty, you had a comment, certainly, I'm sorry, Marty, I forgot, I got lost. No, I didn't forget, Marty.
If we wanted something added in, should I just send it to you?
You know what, probably, 'cause if we want to add it then, it's easier if, if you write it on...
I think if we're gonna do this, we ought to have the requirement to due diligence.
Yeah, that's fine.
For example, I think you vote contract seal.
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead. Yeah, Marty, if you do it in writing to me, then I'll bring, are you gonna send it to everybody?
Yeah, I'll send it.
Good.
Actually, I don't have much time, I'll spend, uh...
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the other, the other comment, which is under violations here, all reported violations of this code of conduct will be investigated. That costs you thirteen, I'm sorry, that costs the people in this room, membership, thirteen thousand wasted dollars.
Marty, thank, anybody else?
Oh, no, you know, I'm coming short.
I'm not, I...
That might be a violation of the code of conduct.
Which we don't have yet, okay.
Will you be, uh, making copies of this available to many?
It's the same one you've seen from three years ago, at Budgers, like...
Is it, is it the same one?
Sit down, here's the old one, here's the new one.
Well, I think, yeah, that's fine, you want to just put it on the website?
Not that I can see, or what do you want?
Yeah, the packet will be on the we, I was gonna get it on the website.
See, see this part, candidate endorsement, that's what caused this, the last one.
Okay, Pete, sorry, you have a question?
Oh, Pete Joe Putz, it's been...
And, and hard to do.
I don't know if I have the time. I just want to comment, uh, member of the community, um, and it's not at all unusual for organizations to have codes of conduct. Um, in fact, best practices of many organizations suggest that you should have code of conduct, boards of directors, whether it be profit or not, or profit. I, I think some of the people here recognize that, so I don't know whether it's divisive or not, I haven't been part of any debate, but I can just tell you, my experience is that it's quite normal, organizations to have a code of conduct.
Are you the genesis of this, this idea?
Oh, for goodness sake, Josh, and what do you think?
I just want to buy, I want to buy, I have nothing to do with this being on the table or not, I just have an opinion.
Okay, I'm just...
Talk about divisive.
Even though my name was invoked earlier, by the way, I'm an officer of the organization, and indeed, I am bound by ethical standards, okay? And I believe for one person, it'd be very helpful to clarify, as is being suggested, I don't get a vote, I, I've never been involved in a debate on this thing. I wasn't involved in the old code of conduct, I wasn't involved in its undoing, but I just think from an organizational standpoint, it's a very good thing to have, my personal thing.
Thank you. Joe?
Act one eleven sixteen two thousand and five, Ocean Pines Board of Directors had a discussion of code of conduct, much like the one that, and if the new one suggested was the same.
Yeah.
It had some prohibitions on board members, uh, supporting board candidates.
That's what started.
Somebody said, well, if you wear a pin, they, they got into stuff like, well, if you wore a candidate's pin, you came to the meeting, that would be a violation, and you could be thrown off the board of directors, and it gets a little weird. At any rate, the whole purpose of it at the time, now let's talk frankly, the whole purpose on eleven sixteen two thousand and five was the majority on the board of directors wanted to control another director named Mark Bennett. That was the purpose, okay? Now, then, on twelve twenty-one two thousand and five, vote was held, that order, that code of conduct was passed, December two thousand and five. On five sixteen two thousand and seven, Ray Unger made a motion to eliminate the code of conduct. That motion to eliminate the code of conduct was unanimous. Dan Stokerski, who you mentioned, Jerry, and I don't know what he said in your comments there, Dan Stokerski chaired that meeting and voted to eliminate the code of conduct, and he was one of the driving forces to originally establish the code. At that time...
Can I quote him?
I'll quote him. At that time, Bill Zawacki was on the board of directors, who subsequently became president, and he said, the problem was that the code of conduct was selectively enforced. In other words, the majority wouldn't enforce it on members of the majority. And the big issue that he brought up was confidential information being slipped to the press and media and other people. The problem was, the, the majority was slipping the information to the press and other people when it suited them, but they would not go after themselves for violations of the code of conduct. Ray Unger, when he made his motion, said, the entire code of conduct had been nothing but a vehicle for divisiveness. These are people at the time who had been living with. Now, Dan Stokerski, interestingly, again, he was one of the major people who wanted it, he voted to get rid of. Dan Stokerski, on video, and I can send you a link to see, Dan Stokerski said, the board of directors, he comes to the conclusion, the board of directors should not have the ability to remove a director for any reason whatsoever. He said, directors are elected by the people, lot owners, and only the lot owner should have the right to remove.
In order to recall.
Now, maybe he's changed his mind now, yeah, reference to re, recall, maybe he's changed his... I think this is a trip down the worst part of memory lane of this community. I hope you give it a lot of thought, don't bring this up. This is going to be very, very divisive. I know you don't intend, but like, Mark, the, the original was intended to go after Mark Bennett, and nobody will admit this, but this is intended to go after that man right there.
Again.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Well, thank you, Joe, for being able to read my mind, um, but I'm sorry, you're wrong.
I've been wrong, I've been wrong a few times, by the way.
Well, no, this is one, and I'll just, I will send you to pursue it because I think it's a good thing.
Bring up the video, your comments, five years, one reject.
The shame of it is, is that a lot of people in this community and the people that attend these meetings continually go back to history, and while history is a great teacher for us, it is not the present. You have a lot of different people sitting around this table.
People who don't learn, mistakes of history are bound to repeat.
But, that's, that, that's your occasion, so, you know...
Louis, George knew that.
All right, um, any other comments for anybody else?
Well, I...
Yes?
Yeah, I have one, um, I ran the code of conduct program for the IT Division of Intel Corporation.
Of, of where, sir?
Intel Corporation.
Intel. Little, little intel thing, yeah, yeah.
Little, little ours, ours was a tad more complex.
Yeah.
I'm a general believer in codes of conduct, but there is, there is one thing that you have to think really hard, because they can be abused, and when they're abused, they are wretchedly awful things. They are not only divisive, but they go to the very heart of the fabric of whatever organization.
That's right.
So I think each of you, since this is gonna come up as a motion, each of you has to think very substantial about whether this board, or any board, can even-handedly and fairly enforce it, because if your answer to that question is no, then I strongly urge you to skip it and don't do it, even though I'm in favor of codes of conduct. If your answer is that you think that can happen, and you kind of make a promise to yourself to do everything you can do to make it be, be operated in even-handed and fair way, then I think it's a good thing. That's a hard question, I don't suggest any kind of public debate on it, I think you, you go talk to yourself about it, think about it, but if you can't do your level best, all of you, to even-handedly enforce the code of conduct, even when you don't like the outcome, it'll be a giant mess.
What's the alternative?
Well, the alternative is to rely on the looser language in the bylaws and continue to coast as you are now. What you're doing now is not awful, in my opinion, I don't think it's the best you can be, that's why, among other things, I favor it. I know Intel could not operate without a very strict code of conduct, and by the way, in the early days, they did operate without, and the results got awful.
If I can add, one of the things that naturally happened with the board, um, when you jump to the only reason they have it is to get rid of something, that isn't the purpose of having, that's the last purpose of having. If that, and, and I think there's a natural tendency, jump at, well, you only put that in place so you can get rid of something, uh, that's not, I can, that's not the intent that something could have, but these kinds of things to get, it's not my mind to, to not have any kind of guideline short of, I mean, and because I, I would tend to disagree with bylaws we have today, provide the governance that would require, at this point, we can darn near anything we want to do.
Right, that was in response to the what else can you do?
Right, right, okay, I'm sorry.
That was not...
And that's one thing I want to add to this, is that, that we're gonna have a debate, doesn't have to be divisive, but if fate is about, the only reason that this is tiresome, it's a waste of time.
Challenge.
There's no point even having it, because that isn't the reason for a code of conduct at first, it just isn't, in my view, I'm gonna, I'll have, thank you.
Look, this exact document...
I'm not saying this document...
This exact document was used against me a year ago, was it two, whenever it was?
Wasn't in existence two years ago.
It wasn't, but obviously, the person that brought it forward didn't know that, neither did our attorney, I had to tell him. As a matter of fact, our attorney said, didn't happen, he was sitting at the table when it was voted out.
True story.
The point I'm making, you can go ahead and pass it again, everything I did that you charged, I would do tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine.
Can't, you know, you gotta find a real cause to get rid of somebody, I challenge you.
But the point was, that's, that's what the point was.
It is the point.
Well, wow.
I don't...
Joe?
Back when Marty was charged, the initial charge was that he violated the code of conduct, and then all of a sudden, everybody realized, wait a minute, Act of two thousand and seven, board of directors eliminated the code of conduct, so he went to Joe Moore, you have a letter somewhere from Joe Moore, he tells you that if there was a code of conduct, then you could vote to get rid of him. Back when that happened, I wrote it, I can go back and find it, I said, watch out, it's coming, a, a movement to renew the code of conduct to get at Clark, because Joe Moore said, you can't get at him without a code of conduct. Now, you can sit, laugh, and you can say what you want, coincidences are not always just coincidence.
It's normally...
There are, there are people on this board of directors who filed formal charges against Clark, and we all know that, and one of them was release confidential information. Moore said, to you, you can release whatever he wants, if you can't stop him, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, this is intended to try to stop that, but then you gotta try, suppose he did release him, and you don't know, how can you prove that he did? You might think that he did, and you all get together, and you have Joe Moore investigate, and then you throw him off the board of directors, can you imagine? Court cases, I mean, this, this, believe, you have too many other things on your plate, too many important things to get wrapped up, something that is gonna, it's gonna be divisive. Right?
Okay, Tom?
Just to follow up on, on a, on a comment over here, even if everyone here at this table believes that they were very even-handed, fair-minded, and all of that, in the event of some controversy, think future...
Future boards.
You can't bind future boards, you don't know who's gonna be on a board in two, three, four years.
No, I think, I think that's a legitimate issue, is if you're not willing to apply it effectively, which corporations can do, if we're not able to do that, that's clearly something we have to think about.
The other thing too, Tom, Justice Kennedy, at the Supreme Court level, said, and I quote, "I cannot define pornography, but I know it when I see it," and that's what this stuff is. You know, what it means to, to Terry, who's a well-intentioned human being, and what it means to me are two different things, but I, I perceive what it is, and it is what it is. Truth is in the eye of the beholder, and I think we gotta be very, very careful.
Well, it's just a thought, it seems to me that the code of conduct...
It seems to me that the code of conduct, for any organization, particularly this one, is to help guide the individual member, and have that individual member agree to abide by the terms of the code of conduct, as opposed to actions to be taken by the board, get rid of somebody, is to provide guidance and to tell that person, when you assume the responsibilities, and it is a responsibility, whether it be this board or some other board, or the elected body, that you agree to be bound by that. Period.
Pete just defines the majority reigning in power. It's exactly what you said.
What I said, Marty, was it's up to each individual to embrace.
You either embrace the majority's way of thinking, or you're in violation of the code of conduct.
I didn't even take the next step. I'll just stick with, listen. I see Marty.
No, I just agreed with him. I'm just exasperated. It's just to be a decent person.
I don't understand. I think it's not for us, though.
Okay, liaison reports.
Oh, a couple of things on the, let's see. Couple of us attended the meeting in Snow Hill. Bill was with me, so if I forget something, Bill, or, you know, I shaded the wrong way, you give me straight, okay?
Meeting you're talking about is the county commissioner's?
The county commissioner's office in Snow, county commissioner's meeting in Snow Hill held yesterday, yeah, Tuesday. The issue that directly impacts this particular organization involves notification from Worcester County and the feds through FEMA. And I've given copies of this to Tom, Bob Thompson, so that, you know, he knows what's coming down the pipe. Basically, FEMA is changing the maps. And I think, did I hear like sixty thousand homes were affected one way or another, either they were taken out of the flood plan?
Ten thousand.
Put ten thousand?
Ten thousand, no, twenty-eight thousand.
Okay. Ten thousand were affected by the change, okay? And there is not gonna be any direct notification of those individuals that are affected by this change. So what the county is going to do, they're gonna do two things. They're gonna update their website, and I suggested to Bob that we might wanna do the same thing for our folks, right? And they're gonna have a community information meeting. A representative from FEMA will be there, a representative of Maryland Department of the Environment will be there, a county rep will be there, and a contractor, I guess.
I'm sorry, Jack. It'll be done here, no, she wants?
Wait, wait, I'm gonna get there. They wanted to hold it down at Snow Hill, the commissioners want it held at Stephen Decatur, because this is where, you know, the largest part of the population is. So they're working out those details. But as it stands now, it's scheduled for, Snow Hill could be changed, we hope, January sixteen twenty fourteen. I'm gonna pass all this along to Michelle, she'll have this as a documentation.
The date is January sixteen.
That, yes, and they gotta clear with Stephen Decatur to make sure they can accommodate it or what, so there may be some squish in this date. It may move, what I forget.
Nothing, they're just hoping to stick to that date, because that's the only date that FEMA is available, in that, like, couple months. So they're hoping to stay.
That's the only one for the county, or is that just for the northern?
No, it's just that's the only one for the county. They had talked about sending out postcards, all twenty-six thousand and all that kinda stuff, but that's just cumbersome and expensive and all that. So they're gonna go with a media thing, hit all the papers, they actually wanna hit all the insurance companies and, you know, doing that, instead of just sending something in the mail that people aren't gonna read, they actually wanna go to the insurance companies and say, you contact your people to see if they're gonna need it, or any adjustments, instead of, you know, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, Ocean Pines should not be going out and rooting up eighty-four hundred and forty-seven people and say, hey, you gotta check your policy and all that kinda stuff. The county is taking a proactive stance on that in having this meeting, and they'll be there, hopefully, I mean, they're talking about FEMA will be there to answer people's questions, direct questions, you know, I'm at such and such property, and I'm involved in this.
When will the maps be online, do we know?
You're talking about at the county level?
Correct.
The information at the county level? You know, I don't know that.
I think he said it's already up there.
I think it might be up. But again, it's gonna be talking about Snow Hill and the date on the sixteenth, and they wanna change that. But it might be already up on their website.
They say anything about the insurance companies having any responsibility?
There was a lot of back and forth about the banks and the insurance companies, and, you know, who's gonna be notified, you know, who, and there were no answers.
Well, next week, I'm going to a meeting with the board of realtors that are doing this, with some insurance people. Because it is obviously affecting all of us and our clients, so.
Would you like some copies of this?
I think I would like that, that'd be nice.
Okay.
It is something, though I'm not sure I agree with you a hundred percent that it's not our responsibility for Ocean Pines, I think there should be something on our site.
Yeah.
A link, saying, these are the maps.
Yeah, something like that, I'm fine with, but for us to notify.
No, I don't think we need to notify.
Personally, I don't think that we need to be involved.
Then we're on the same page.
I think that's putting us in danger.
But I think we need to put the information out there. Yeah, because a lot of these people are, is there? No.
But the sense of the commission was, they're concerned, they wanna make sure that the information gets out, and that's a good thing. The other thing is the golf committee and, Bill attended that with me also. I think he's got his eye on me, and he's trying to figure out, I'm really representing this board properly.
Is that on code of conduct? Put that in the code of conduct.
I don't have enough time.
Well, I do wanna go on record, Jack, you actually bring up this meeting, Eric.
Oh, I did.
Did you really?
I don't believe that's.
I'm working on it. Anyway, they just had an election. Ellen Spatero is the new president, Bob Long, vice president, Suzanne Brooks, secretary, Chuck Shelton, treasurer. And they gave me some stuff to bring back to the board, so I'm gonna put it in the record, and, you know, we can take a look at it. More focused marketing support from the OPA to generate new memberships. They'd like to see us become proactive in helping them generate memberships. I don't know how you do that. Our membership options advertised, I went on the website, and I saw them advertise. You hit a link and you go to, you know, so, yeah, they're there.
Easier to find now than it used to.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe you had to talk to somebody. Really didn't want to talk to someone.
Website refers, looks like those rates are from a quarterly newsletter, so we probably get them out that way also. Emphasis, they would like to see an emphasis on weekend property owners' membership, advertising residents receiving discount rates, and they're also interested in Casper's future. One of the complaints that we heard was Casper Golf doesn't put emphasis on membership or customer, membership services or customer services. And they gave a couple examples, might have been, you know, a bad day for somebody or something of that nature. Here's the big rub, and check me on it, make sure I get this right. Notification between the administration building staff and the pro shop when renewing membership. Evidently, it requires a pink sheet to be given to somebody before the records are updated, so the person has to take the pink sheet down to the pro shop and say, I'm renewed, and I wanna set a PT time or what have you. And they would, you know, they'd like to know if there's a better way to update those records. But, you know, until we get an online system, I don't know what the heck that would be. And they're saying that it creates communication problems and some dissatisfied members. What did I leave out?
One thing, and it's not, I don't know if it's golf-related, but there is a, an employee whose wife is having a double mastectomy December tenth, I believe, and the golf commission has gotten together, they are taking donations for this family, it's a young family, they have four kids under eight, and this thing happening here, so they are taking donations at the, at the pro shop. We were talking about maybe like doing ten nights of dinners, and I still wanna kinda do that myself, but they are taking donations for, because apparently insurance is only covering a bunch of, of her surgery and all that, Christmas and stuff, so.
I just sent an email to Jim about that, because I got the email, and our office is willing to help with that, so. We just need to know what they need.
Yeah, and for people that don't know, and Bob, I'm hoping that with this new website we can get it out, and the idea I have is like, going to each group, aquatics group, district group, and putting out things, like when we talked about, when there was two other employees who were gonna be all sick, and their pay was, you know, had run out and all that kinda stuff, the golf members got together and donated over eight thousand dollars for these two employees to cover, you know, and that kinda stuff needs to get out in the community, and happy hours and all that kinda stuff, that's not just, you know, a lot of people in the community think it's a bunch of rich people that get together and talk about their yachts and all that kinda stuff. Well, they can come and look my bank account, and they can see that that doesn't matter, that's not, you know, what happening. But our happy hours and all that kinda stuff are a lot of fun, and they're not just golf people. They are, you know, people from outside that come over, that kinda live in the neighborhood. But, you know, we'd really like to get more people over there involved, and, you know, we do that, we gave a lot of money to, or the golf people gave a lot of money to kids, kids scholarships they do every year, you know, we have tournaments that do that, you know, there's a lot of fundraising, a lot of good things for good people in the community that really goes, people don't know about it, but I think if they would come over and be part of the group, they would enjoy that. I'm a big, I'm a big charity guy, I like, you know, be involved in charities and stuff like that, that's kinda what I like to do now, and even if I wasn't a golfer, I would like to be involved in that, and word has to be out that it's just not offers that do that. Of course, come there, you know, very, a very good group of down-to-earth people that...
Marty.
Thank you. Also, a question. I thought when you paid your membership fee of here, you got your bag tag. Don't, isn't it where you get your bag tag?
What's, where, I think where the breakdown is, is you come here, they don't do bag tags anymore, but you come here and you get the pink slip. But some people, you know, whoever waits on them, they tell them, take the pink slip to the, to the golf course, because they only talk, you know, a couple times a week, so you might go over there, and a couple people have gone over and been asked to pay a fee after they've already come here and signed up, because the computers can't talk to each other. Right, they can't talk to each other.
They're not online. Right. And that's, we talked, I think we talked about as a board, of doing that, as one of our goals in the future, to get this whole system online, that's the only reason I bring it up. It's not a complaint or what have you, but it does point out a striking need that we need everywhere, you know, beach club, what have you.
If a guy walks in and just paid his dues, put him on a cart, pack it back, thank him for his business, then you call him, somebody at the desk and go, hey, Gordon won't really pay his dues. Yeah.
Any other liaison with this?
Just say, just say that environmental natural assets will be.
And you'll let Terry know that, so the.
I'm trying hard.
Okay, this is a test now, Marty, okay.
I just wanna briefly, and I'll probably do while working, Parker Rex met last night, and they're working on three issues. One is, you know, APA, parks, or playgrounds, a little complicated. Number two is the gym floor that has, and number three is, whether, what's that, generate revenue, or whether we provide space for membership. So, it's becoming a struggle.
Anything for free is gonna sell.
I'll do something more, more specific. We just. Any other committee reports?
Long meeting. Thank you, everybody. Our next meeting is the eighteenth at three o'clock. Thank you.